Would have to deal with the maps after.
Yeah, it's.
Alright, so seven o'clock, so we can call the meeting to order. Uh, we can do a roll call when you're ready.
Barkle.
Here.
Lost.
Here.
Kettering.
Here.
Hummel.
Here.
Nelson is gone. Welsh?
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Yep, you got it. Gone there. Okay, so everybody's here except. Right, we all had a chance to go over the minutes from the previous meeting. If there's any changes, I need a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second, lost.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Is there anything be changed about the agenda tonight?
No.
Right. Unless there's anything else from the board, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So will get.
Second, lost.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Right, carried, so we can do conflict of interest declarations. Sherry wants to start us?
Lost, none.
Getting none.
Welsh, none.
Barkle, none.
Hummel, none.
Park, none.
As usual, we got some time, we could probably go on to a couple plats. Got them ready, Bill?
Public comment. Public comment.
Want to take, oh yeah, we don't have public comment on there.
We should do that again.
Yeah, it's on the seven twenty-five.
Oh, yeah, nevermind. Yeah, it's on me, it's on that page.
Alright, so the first plat, um, you can see where my cursor is, that's where the country said bed and biscuit is. Just below into the left of them is La Croix Construction. Uh, Bed and Biscuit is selling a strip along that southern end. And this plat adds it to the La Croix parcel.
So it'd be like cutting off right about here, going across about where their fence is at, basically?
Yeah, somewhere right about here, and then this piece is now added to La Croix.
Okay.
And everything's the right, big enough?
Yep, they were both conforming and they still are conforming.
Looks like it's about, uh, I guess I can't see it real good, but about fifty-three feet or thirty-three feet?
Yeah. Yep, approximately.
At fifty-three.
On this, anybody sees any other issues? Forming lots, I don't see anything wrong with it, but. Need motion to approve.
Gary moves.
Almost second.
Give it to Clark, he tried.
He's on delay.
Yeah.
Alright, we can do a vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Lost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Hummel.
Yes.
Welsh.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Let's take one more, and this is the city ETJ, ETJ plat. Kind of a formality for us, uh, nobody knows what's going on.
This one right across from the Fox stop, or?
Yes. Uh, is this little triangular piece right here? What they're planning off to sell for a moment.
It's gonna go in.
My understanding is it's like, kinda like those man caves that are out by the lake.
Oh.
Little.
Drive up.
Storage office.
Yeah, cuz there's like foundation and stuff there, right?
Yeah, there's not much room for anything else. Parking. Pretty much. Yeah, yeah.
Do they have accents?
Yeah, they have a, and there's an entrance right off of West Simmons Road.
Okay.
Right about.
Everybody.
Oh, I see, it's off of fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's off of.
Off of West Simmons Road.
Yeah, they wouldn't want them coming off of fifty.
Yeah, even the Fox stop couldn't get that. They'd go.
The city's already seen this.
Yeah, in fact, they're, they've, they kinda forgot about us, but they ran it through their whole procedure and then, as an afterthought, we get to do it.
Yeah, so basically it follows all their.
Yes.
zoning codes.
It's more, it's kinda like a courtesy thing, since it's in that ETJ, we both get to be, be aware of it.
Cuz that's technically not in the city.
They have an annex that.
Yeah.
Uh, well.
Because if it was in the city, we wouldn't have to see it, right? So it's just outside.
Oh, yeah, it's right here.
Yep.
And then down here to Jogs back west.
It goes all over the place out there.
I would move approval.
Second, Hummel.
Alright, we can vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Lost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Hummel.
Yes.
Welsh.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Is there any way we can make Dan a little louder?
Uh, if you go into the teams, you might be able to. Second. Next. Let's see, uh, setbacks on that lot.
On which one, this one?
The little triangle.
The little triangle one?
Yeah.
Pretty minimal.
What the city ones are.
I don't know what to, yeah. Guess we just.
Sound very, sound very far from the road and it's not very far from the railroad track.
That's correct. I was told early on it was gonna be a drive-through like ice thing, and I was like, oh, that might, you know, that might actually work, you know, something little small in the middle, you know? And then as I started falling, I'm like, well, that's one big drive-through ice thing. So, yeah, cuz that's, I mean, that's all I could think you could use in that small lot, so.
We're still learning about team, so we're not sure how to get him any louder, so we'll check into it.
Okay.
So.
Alright, so we can move on to the first conditional use permit. Um, Zimmerman conditional use permit, applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for an accessory building in a moderate density residential district exceeds maximum aggregate square footage, twenty-four hundred square feet per Article seven, section seven oh seven, Article eighteen, section eighteen oh five, and Article nineteen, section nineteen oh five. Applicant wishes to build an accessory structure that's nine hundred square feet and already has over twenty-four hundred square feet of accessory structures. Eighty-five hundred square feet. Uh, said property is legally described as the east six hundred eighty-nine and seven tenths feet of the northeast quarter and southwest quarter, north of Highway three fourteen, section four, township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
So this is his parcel, it's dual zone, I'm gonna, I'm gonna blow it up a little bit. Um, he's already got some structures there, I believe he wants to build over in this area, is that correct? Uh, this one, yeah, still in the modern density apartment. Um, I believe you do some farming. Do you do farming?
No, I'm relative.
Okay. Anyway, uh, these are the existing buildings, he wants to build another one right here, storage. We've had some other, other CUPs for this out in that area. Quite a bit bigger too. Nobody's ever complained, so.
Oh, the three buildings that we see there, they're the ones that total twenty four acres for me.
Well, there's, there's this small one, which is over the ten by twelve, this one, this one.
Sort of.
Five of them, yeah. These are all pretty small, these three.
And that's right off of fifteen.
Right off three fourteen.
Three fourteen, three fourteen, yeah.
Here's three fourteen.
I have to say, I didn't notice that. Oh. Yeah, okay. See, now I know where you're at. Yeah, you take great care of it, it looks very nice.
I don't see any problem with it, so.
Yeah.
I don't even, I'll move approval.
Oh, we need public comment.
Oh, yeah, I forgot, I forgot to see your P.
Yeah.
My bad. Alright, so we can fly this and be done, now we have.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, a closed public comment. Alright, I'm going through checklist. Basically, it's gonna use the same ingress egress, same parking, same refuse services, utilities, screening. Everything is the current yard there with all the current buildings. As far as being generally compatible, like Bill said, there's other buildings that are bigger than that that have been granted in the area, and quite a few, yes. Adding into basically farm site, but and sticking it behind there, it's not gonna help any issue, so. I guess based on that, unless there's anything anybody else wants to add, I'd entertain a motion.
Oh, you, did you ask? Oh, you asked Republican, I'm sorry, I'm staring off, you got, uh, no, I would move approval.
Second. Alright, vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Lost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Yes. Welsh.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
To the air CPA or?
CPA.
CPA.
Thank you for investing in the county.
Thank, thank you for.
Uh, Steve, give me a call tomorrow, I'll explain the next.
Okay.
So the next applicant isn't here, but if you wanna go ahead, it's a pretty simple, straightforward one, if you want.
Sure, so they can request an unconditional use permit for fireworks, sales, and lakeside commercial district per Article eleven, section eleven oh nine, Article eighteen, section eighteen oh five, and Article nineteen, nineteen oh five. Um, property is legally described as lot one, Houston's addition, section sixteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. So is that the old Lucan building?
Yes, it's the old Lucan Arts building, he bought it.
Oh, that's motorsports bought it, right?
Yeah, right next door, he's got several lots out there. He's wanted to do fireworks for the past few years, but just never got around to doing a CUP, and it's, it's, uh, listed as a conditional use in Lakeside Commercial. So, and I, you know, I think the season is about two weeks that you get to sell through the year, maybe a little longer out, out of state residence, but it's not like a year-round, no, activity.
So he's gonna basically utilize that, that Lucan building or whatever.
Yes.
I guess I will ask for public comment. Seeing none, a closed public comment.
Move approval.
Second, Welsh.
Yeah, before we vote on that, just to clarify, I guess, with the checklist, it looks like there's pretty well established ingress egress and all parking utility screening signs and everything, um. I guess the only thing would be is it, it's compatible with the area, and I guess since there's already a bunch of fireworks.
Yeah, there's one or two to the east and then one to the west, so it's kind of the place for fireworks.
Right. So if everybody's good with that, we can vote.
San Diego.
Great.
What was that, Dan, say something?
Nah, just a little noise, background noise.
Good. Alright, go ahead.
Alright, Barkle.
Yes.
Lost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Yes.
Welsh.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
So this belongs to a trust, they own quite a bit of the property surrounding it. What they're doing is taking this parcel, they're making a square out of this. It's a homestead, so it meets that qualification, and the rest of it is just going to be included with this.
In that bigger one there?
Yeah, they own this one and this one, and I think this one, but this will just become part of this, and this becomes part of that also.
That's all that within the family. Pretty much.
Well, yeah, I think the homestead will probably be sold off at some point.
Right.
But this will be maintained to farm.
Right.
Everything's conforming, other than the building site, which has the exemption.
Yes.
It's gonna be, what, ten acres when they get done?
Yeah, approx.
Something like that.
Yep. They basically went straight down and then straight across where the buildings were to get everything included.
Right. Move approval, lost.
Second, Welsh.
Alright, vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Lost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Hummel.
Yes.
Welsh.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Alright, on to discussion of opposed ordinance changes. So, I guess the only thing be basically a continuation of last meeting. Since we don't really have anything, I guess, um. One question. Last time, that wasn't really cleared up. Basically, like, how does this going to work, like with the proposal for the Article five? Changing it to some, this quarter section deal, how exactly does that work? What's the what's the plan? Because I guess what's written here, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
So, um, my understanding is, really what we're focusing on is what the commission, what was sent to us from the commission, is that right?
Yeah, right.
Sheet here, so do you wanna start with the egg, or do you wanna start at the top with the other ones?
We'll start at the top again.
Qualify that, I think the commissioner was also asking for any input that you might have in addition to what we talked about, is that not right, Gary?
Yeah, so basically, yeah, they wanted to focus on this sheet, but, but certainly if there's other input in regards to lot size requirements, we can have that discussion, they just didn't wanna get into revising the Article five. Um, I think Don was gonna talk a little bit about, if you look at a lot of our neighboring counties, they do have eligibility for for building sites and egg, Mini, Mini Haha is an acre, Lincoln an acre, Bonhomme five acre, uh, Turner, uh, two, and Turner has two and a half, Clay two, and Union two and a half. Hutchinson has twenty acres, but they do a reduction through a CUP, so I think if you wanted to talk a little bit more about that, but, but yeah, any, anything else in regard to if there's other ways that you think that we might wanna change some of the lot size, they're certainly open to that.
It looks, uh, we're trying to, uh, I guess I'm, I'm trying to follow Sherry's suggestion of, what, four months ago? When she suggested that we, we need to take a deep dive on our financials to see, uh, how the county's doing and, and how we could improve and, uh, and, uh, because the, the general fund has, uh, gone down in the last four years from eleven, twelve million down to around five million now. And, uh, that's, that's what the county, uh, utilizes to operate on, uh. Dan and I, uh, met this morning with, with Patty, and we started a discussion on, on, uh, the financials and how we can get a more clear-cut, uh, view of what's happened in twenty twenty-four. Uh, twenty twenty-three doesn't look like we probably can go back that far and, or add much value to it, so twenty twenty-four, uh, is, uh, our analysis basis, and then we're gonna project twenty twenty-five, and, but it, it really looks, uh, that, uh, the federal government, the, the, and the, and the state government are both going to have, uh, serious cutbacks, and it's probably questionable on how much money will be available for grants uh, and other, uh, sources of, of, uh, government funding, uh, to do some of the projects that we've, we've done. And, uh, for example, if, if we would, uh, go ahead with, uh, the, uh, construction of the bridge, uh, north of Scotland, uh, it, it, it potentially, uh, could really almost eliminate our general fund balance. Uh, so we have to, we have to enter into, uh, a good deal of analysis and, and caution going forward, and, uh, this proposal, uh, we weren't thinking of that when we started this discussion, but this proposal is one way that, uh, I guess we can add value to the, the tax base of the county. If, if people, uh, are willing to put, uh, homes up, uh, out in the county. And, uh, uh, initially, we started, uh, looking at this thinking about twenty acres, times is two hundred thousand dollars, pretty prohibitive for, for most people that are looking at building homes, so we looked at, uh, what, what could we do, and what are people doing around us? And as you see, when what Gary said, uh, one acre, one acre, five acres, two point five acres, two acres, two point five acres, it's, it's pretty significant, significantly less. I, I believe, uh, that we need to do all we can to protect, uh, our number one, uh, fundraiser in the county, uh, agriculture, uh, and, uh, don't wanna, uh, set this up so that it can have any drastic effects on agriculture, but I believe it, we, we can do some things. And that's, I guess that's where we're at.
So when I look at this, the paragraph one, it appears to me, and I'm, I'm envisioning what this would look like, and, and it's like, best I can tell, it would be, let's say we have a section of land, and there's four quarter sections, and if there was, if a, uh, landowner decided to sell a parcel of five acres, that would be, uh, possible, and it looks to me like, if, if I read this right, it's at the corner of the, uh, quarter section, and that there could be up to four of residences on a section. And that would, that includes any that are already there. Is that right, Don?
Plus with any, plus what's already.
Plus what's already there, okay, so look, alright, and so then I looked at the ag-zoned part of our county, and just, just north of Highway fifty, not, not the parts over by Gaville and that, but just north of Highway fifty, there's, uh, there are twelve townships. And each township has thirty-six acres, or thirty-six sections, if I'm not mistaken. And so that would mean that twelve times thirty-six would be a little over four hundred acres, or four hundred potential, or four hundred, uh, sections in that area, and each one of them could potentially have four homes built on it.
Do the math for me one more time.
Yeah, so basically, you've got thirty there's twelve sections, twelve townships.
Right.
And there, and each township is thirty-six sections.
So thirty-six times twelve.
Is a little over four hundred.
Yep.
And then, uh, each section could have four residences built on it. The way this reads to me, is that correct?
I think that would be correct.
Yeah, and so like, we're looking at over fifteen hundred potential, uh, home sites. Closer to seventeen hundred, really, if I'm doing the math in my head, um, and that obviously, it won't be that many, because there are gonna be some, uh, quarter sections that are not buildable, uh, and so forth, so potentially, you're probably down to about twelve hundred potential building sites of five acres each, and Don, uh, if, if we agree to this, would it, would that land, that five acres, would that still be zoned ag? Just, just the five acres themselves?
Gary.
The reason I'm asking is because of the way ag land is taxed. It's taxed based on productivity, not on sale price.
Correct, but they, they do, um, they do some different things on the smaller acreages, if they're, if they're just used for basically a farmstead or a. If they're just used for basically a farmstead or a building site and. And as you can see, like we just mentioned, the. A lot, a lot of our counties down here in the Southeast region have that ability currently. Um, this county, I know had lot, there's lots of them already existing out there. That, uh. Back, back a few years back, they did, used to do a lot of variances from what I was told to. To have smaller lots and egg and, and, uh, so it's kind of going back to that philosophy a little bit more. And, but they do get taxed differently.
So if, you know, clearly this would be a potential tax boom for the county. Tax revenue.
Probably not in our lifetime.
Not in our lifetime. At least, but maybe in, uh, Sam's or Sherry's, but. What I like about it is that. There's nothing in this that says a farmer has to sell. If they want to keep their, uh. Land intact. They certainly can do that. But as you pointed out last meeting. Some. Times you get in a situation when you're farming where. A little extra income in a year. Might make the difference of being able to stay on the land or not.
By way of farmer, I would look at this. I would look at my land as a for, as an alternate for a 401K.
Right. And so. I. To those. I don't see a downside to that. As long as, and, and in fact, in our. Our, uh. Let's see, in section five, I'm sure I was in the wrong section, but it actually warns people. That if they build in the country. They're building in the country. And that there will be.
Sixteen, I think you're.
Is it sixteen?
We actually have on our building permit application, there are acknowledgements about that.
Right.
That it's, it's ag, there's going to be farming and spraying and.
Right. That kind of stuff. But this gets us, that gets us away from. From having to specifically say, hey. You're probably going to have a KFO right next door to you. It's already in the zoning ordinance. And people that have been building out in the country have known that.
And that was addressed, that's also addressed in the. In the building permit application, one of the acknowledgements.
Right. Well, the one thing about that section is it doesn't protect. The rights of anybody that's in the ag zone district. If you want to start something new, it only protects the old stuff.
True.
So basically you're at a stalemate with. Just. What guys currently have, they're allowed to keep. They can do some modest expansion to what they already have, but if somebody new wants to get in and start up something new. Do any kind of value added ag. You basically can't do it and you're going to add more. Housing in there and that's going to make it even tougher.
Yeah, but they don't have to sell.
No, but if my neighbor across the road does, then I'm pretty much screwed. So.
The reality of, of. Modern agriculture is. Animal agricultures. They're taking the backseat to everything. The, the cattle are there today, hogs are marginal. Cattle will be down, they always do, always goes around, but the fact is. Geographically, it's better to. Reese corn and beans and let somebody else do the work. There'll be a few large operators, but there won't be every little farm having fifty cows and twenty sows anymore. It's over.
No, you're not going to have the small operations like that. So instead of having. On every quarter section, having a farmstead that has. Fifty cows and hundred hogs and all that like there was twenty, thirty, forty years ago. Yeah, you're not going to have that. You're going to have a few smaller, more concentrated. Operations that or that have more head in one location. Because of the economics of it. And that's the only way that anybody new is going to actually continue or get into.
We, we pretty put. We as a county pretty well took care of any more cables in the county. For the foreseeable future. Cause there, there, there are very few guys. Like you. And I don't know if you can do this, Chris. But then you come out and, and put down two, three hundred thousand dollars. For lawsuits. To fight it in the courthouse. That's why there's no applications. Because young people can't afford that.
Yeah, but that's. I think that a lot of this is getting conflated with say like a hog barn, but that's not. How our ordinance reads, it's. All the animals, anything, whether you want to do anything.
There isn't such a thing as, as, as a two hundred head milk cow operation.
But if you want, if I wanted to put up a, say a feedlot and finish out five hundred head of. Cows, I wouldn't be able to do it.
Well, one hundred and ninety-nine you could without a permit.
Does that, yeah, but if we start at two hundred?
Well, this, you know, this, this is probably not fair, but even the reality of that's getting really stretched because. How did the big boys, the big? Don't you think the people that got? Forty, fifty, sixty, two hundred thousand cattle on feed? Don't you think they have an end with? IBP and with, uh, with the Argentinas? Don't, don't you think? They know that they can sell their cattle. Or say they can lock them in, they can lock them in, but they also have. That, that packing plant. Has what sixteen hundred workers? They want to know that they can get. Two thousand head of cattle a day in the slaughter and they don't come to. People that have fifty head of cattle in a feedlot.
So wrapping this back up. Are you in favor of five acre, five acres on quarter sections? You don't think the five acres on quarter sections? Twelve hundred ish identified properties will affect modern and future agriculture? I mean. I just, I want, I kind of want to know.
I'm more concerned about the ability. To spray.
Okay.
To put on spray, uh, for. And those kind of things that I am available.
So we're trying, so the intent is to keep large tracts of land together. This is one avenue. Of doing that while off, also offering a development opportunity. Right. I don't think we need to get into the KFO ordinance. I don't think we need to get into wind farm or anything.
But it is.
I know they run into each other, but I truly think. Do we think this is sufficient?
You're trading off. One for the other. So basically if you want to take away. Basically the right to have the option to do animal agriculture in the county in favor of. Being able to develop more housing. Then you can do this. Otherwise, if you want to, if you leave it the same as it is right now, then basically neither one progresses. Or the other option is that. You basically say that in an ag zone district, you know that there's going to be agriculture there and then you allow both.
That's what I think this is.
This isn't allowing both.
It doesn't allow both?
No.
How's that?
Because just like ordinances right now. You. Are going to add more housing in there. It's going to be more restrictive. On anybody that's into animal agriculture. You're not going to be able to start.
I thought we were going to put a. Clause in that says you can't. I thought we were going to put a clause in. Didn't, didn't we talk about just about a clause that says? Uh, you're aware that you're building in the country and you.
Well, that's in there, but it doesn't, doesn't affect the setback or anything to any, if I wanted to start up a new operation.
Put it, put, then it's put setbacks in it. It features.
The right to farm.
That's, that's already in there.
Yeah, the right to farm.
Rights on that, but the way that our ordinance reads right now. Like how the setback deal is and acknowledging that. Currently operating cables and operations.
Chris, uh. Gary has a map that was developed by District Three when we were talking about cables. And there is no place in the county when the person can put a cable in anymore.
If you put it at, say like a twenty four, a hundred head hog barn, yeah, that's true. If you reduce the size down to say like I was giving an example, if you wanted to have like a five hundred head feedlot. Then there is more places in the county that are still open.
Well, again, this is just one piece of this and maybe that's why we should have started with the, the rest of the document, but. But, um, you know, next month when we have the hearing, you have the ability to choose which. Which parts of this or if it's all of it or part of it or. And, and move that on to the recommendation on to the county commission and, um. But I think, you know, like Don said, his, his thought process was is. Maybe this would be the most minimal impact for those quarter sections if we put them in the corners. So that they can farm around it. There's already, if you look at sections, there's already a lot of. The homesteads that are, are on the corners. Uh, people don't want to drive a thought thirteen hundred feet into the middle of a section generally to. Unless they just don't want to be seen. So, so there is a lot of that already, but. That, that's what you'll have to decide for next month's recommendation when we do the hearing, but. But, um, we could go back and forth on this all night, but. But, uh, maybe, maybe you want to think about, uh, looking. How you feel about the rest of these and then we can go back to that too and have that discussion more if you like.
I guess how I wanted to start was Sherry did mention a couple of ways to get. Access and build. In an ag district. I think we need to. Assess those avenues first and see if we feel like they are. Adequate. And then if they're adequate. That'll help us shape our decisions on this document, I guess is. What I would like to propose, but if nobody's into that, I'm cool. Just sitting back and hearing about IBP and. KFOs. So it's up to you guys.
But I, I do think we need to make some progress tonight because we're going to show up at the next meeting with a hearing and a hearing is about. Actual language that we're going to change. And so I think we need to decide something tonight because we keep kicking the can down the road and we're going to have the same discussion at the next meeting.
Totally right.
So, and. To your point, we do need to discuss the tools we already have. And to Gary's point, I think it is wise to start with the easy ones. Call him easy, if you will. I've got a lot of nose written along mine. But maybe we should start with the low density first and then. From there, go to what we have for ag already. And then talk about the language that is here because. There's a lot in that paragraph for five thirteen that, uh, we're not talking about right now. So. How about we go to, back to six thirteen?
That's fine.
Does that seem reasonable? Cause I think we do need to get some real language for Gary to actually. Have published in our, our packet for next time.
So again, like on, uh, six thirteen, I guess last time. Discussion was if you're going to change that basically at three or two acres. Is it that much different than? R two where you got one acre?
Yep. And that's what I've got a no written by this one. I think the, the best approach is if you want to pack more homes is you need to rezonate. Because the people who, like I said last time, the people who have bought that five acre lot and they have neighbors with five acres. They want to be there with five acres and they, they want that. Seclusion, if you will. And all of a sudden, if you go in and say, okay, your area now only requires three acres or two acres. Um, and then their neighbors splitting off some stuff and pretty soon they've got twice the homes in there that they had when they. Built their home twenty years ago. That concerns me. If I lived on five acres. For that specific, specific reason, I guess I would be concerned. And that's why I think the rezoning is actually a better approach.
I learned one thing, uh. Back twenty some years ago when I built a house, uh, out by, uh. Out by the lake, uh. I learned that if you want to control the view in front of you. You buy all the land in front of you.
You absolutely do.
That's what you do. And, and that's no different than the five acre. They got no guarantees. And. I, I'm going to support whatever this group says to the county commission. I may not vote that way when I'm in the county commission, but I think your recommendations and, and they need to be. Voice, voice very clearly to the county commission on what you believe. And that's one of them right there.
On to me, I guess one of the. Things I see. With that, so like on R one. Right now is larger lot sizes and we allow things like the hobby farms. And then there is quite a few of those out there. Where they've got a few animals and everything. Now if we reduce. Lot sizes to be more similar to like R two. Then you get into the question, is that large enough area to allow that? And then do we need to? Change something about that part of our ordinance and like R one, do we need to change like? Our hobby farm rules or? Do something different there?
So I do believe some of those hobby farms, um. The animal units allowed were based on the acres they had.
Yeah, it was one per acre up to ten max, but.
Yeah, there were some rules in here somewhere about that.
Yeah, but you're starting out in base of five acres instead of two or three. That's a lot different. I mean, you. Basically got to double the size of your lot for. Having that type of thing going on property. It's not required.
So that's my, my opinion on it. And if everybody disagrees, then. You disagree.
I agree.
Yeah, I guess I agree too. I mean, we do have R one, R two, R three, got. Different steps. I don't see why we couldn't, if you want to have smaller acreages. They can't get rezoned.
Don, is there any negatives? I re, I rezoned some of my. R, R one, R two, just so I can break off a little bit of the chunk of land. What negatives do you see?
For the farmer.
Not for the farmer, for the.
In R one and R two.
Person who's already living in R one.
I'm not really concerned about them. They build out there. If they want to control everything out there, then they buy the land to control it. That's what they should have done. That's what I didn't do when I lived out by the lake. Okay, that's over. Uh, kind of comes back to the RE polls, right? Things happen. I'm concerned. About the farmers. I want, I don't want. People coming in and fishing because. They smell manure from somebody that's. Got five hundred head feedlot. I don't want. Any of that.
Okay. Maybe I rephrase the question. I already live on R one, Cherry. And I break it up to me R two, what do I lose access to? Do I lose access to my hobby farm, farm? Like that changes because now I've rezoned R two?
Yeah, you can't have.
If you had one, you would be grandfathered in.
Okay.
But you couldn't, if you stole.
Establish one.
If you have five acres and you said, well, I'm splitting it and I've got two and a half here for me and two and a half for Joe Blow.
Yep.
Joe Blow wouldn't be able to have a hobby farm.
Okay.
Like that. So then you are subject to whatever differences there are.
Yep. And then are there any other big drastic differences that I would lose as a? Previous R one property. And now is rezoning to R two?
Well, the only thing that I see is a potential issue, I guess, just. If you wanted to have smaller lots, I would say that you are currently R one and I've got. Whatever I got ten, fifteen acres in R one district and I want to rezone it to R two so I can sell off smaller lots or whatever and split it. You can't necessarily or might be tough. To spot zone it if it's not already connecting.
And can I back up to what Sherry was talking about?
Yeah.
So to get a hobby farm, you have to get a conditional use permit. So that would be issued with, let's say, five acres. If you change that plan at all, according to ordinance, you're supposed to reapply. So I think they may lose that. possibly lose that hobby farm CUP, and it's not listed as a modern density residential one. Not whether they should or shouldn't, I just, I think the way the ordinance raises, that might be a problem.
Yeah, that's that's just what we have to answer the general public with, right? Like, if we're saying, hey, we want you to rezone because it fits better.
Well, this is their choice. They.
I know, but we're just saying this is this is what you'll give up on this rezone, right? Like.
And there's less you can do under conditional use permits under modern density residential, but then it's buyer beware.
I know.
They've got, you know, and one of the big, probably the most frequently asked question from realtors that I get is hey, there's land for sale in the county, can they have chickens? You know, so everybody's looking at they want to have chickens, they want to have some eggs, so they're looking.
Chickens in town.
I know, but you can't in modern, cannot in modern density or high density residential.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that so that would be just something, again, we have to be able to communicate, I guess, in my eyes. What's what is the purpose of making this change? You know, we're we've talked about, should it be three acres or two acres or five acres? But what is the purpose of making this change? What was the?
Build more homes.
So basically, it's to build more homes to increase revenue to the county.
To maybe make it a little more affordable for some. As I mentioned in the past, we've had people that have said I have a friend that has five, ten acres. He said, I'd be happy to give you a couple to build a home on if we had that ability in the ordinance, but we don't. And so, but but I agree that that it's going to be pretty tough to re- have little spot zones in the middle of acres and acres of R one zoning. And that's that's going to be an issue and the issue about they would lose their hobby farm ability to uh, if they went to R two, but we recently just shut down a a home that was doing the chickens in R two. There was a nuisance complaint made and and that was that was stopped and and that's always a possibility if you try and do that kind of thing.
So how do how do Minnie Ha Ha and Lincoln approach that, Gary?
You know, doesn't know what you're saying.
So I I did print off, you'll see on the on the second page of the one I handed out, that it 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 shows you what when Minnie Ha Ha did uh, for their their language there.
That's for egg, though.
Yeah, that's.
That's not for any.
Oh, for R one, yeah, we didn't. I guess I didn't print off any of the R ones. But uh, we could certainly take a look at that.
I just think that's going to be the biggest part of if we are going to go through this systematically, I think that is going to be the biggest part of us going through this of seeing what other places allow in R two, and when all of a sudden I seem to think I do, you know, say I do get my forty some thousand plus square feet, and I'm like, oh shit, I got all this room, and then I look, and I'm like, I can't have chickens, I I can't on my two and a half acres, just because we it was a forced rezone to re- R two, I can't do this, or I can't do that. I want, again, some people buy two and a half acres just because they want green space and they want to buy a zero turn lawn mower. Some people buy two and a half acres because they want a greenhouse and a goat and four chickens or something. And so I think we need to understand that these numbers of Minnie Ha Ha's one acre, you know, and again, that's egg, I understand that. I think we need to understand where they draw the threshold of these hobby and farming and these like ranchettes. And urban sprawl is a thing, it's happening. Hobby farming is a thing, it's happening. But I'm really worried, no different than Chris saying, well, if R one and R two get too close to each other, there's really no value in having both. I'm getting really con- concerned that if we're gonna force people to rezone to R two, it people are gonna have five acres that they can't maintain, then we got weeds we gotta take care of and but they're gonna want animals, and that's why they kept the five acres so they could, you know, stay R one. I think it's gonna be just a mess. I think we need to understand of yeah, you might be giving up some square footage, but you're giving up your right to hobby farm or.
Well, I could, you know, you could look at it kind of like the conditional use aspect too, because it kind of reminds me of the accessory building issue where in R two, you only get X amount of square feet, anything more than that, like you just approved tonight. You have to go through a conditional use process.
Yeah, I I think I should also um, suggest that Yuri, Yuri, you gotta uh, supporter say, no, that isn't right, when I say this. But I think I didn't get a very strong uh, encouragement from Thrive or the city about doing this.
From who?
Thrive or the city.
All about reducing the lot size.
Yeah, everything, everything we heard, ever.
Direct competition.
Is housing and lack of housing, or we can't have economic growth because housing. We came up with this idea, uh, this is a way we could maybe uh, get involved and and uh, help people that want to live on an acreage. But the city, uh, there's a lot of, a lot of the people of the city council uh, weren't weren't really in favor of it. So that tells me they want them all built in town.
So, well, so like, I guess, if you take into consideration like the three and the two, the differences between R one and R two, just say that you went down to two acres on R one, for argument's sake. The real difference then between R one and R two, other than being one acre bigger, is basically, you can have hobby farms in one and you can't in R two. Maybe a little bit of difference in accessory structure size, but so is that a big enough difference to justify having two different zoning districts? If you would do that.
Yeah.
Or should you just combine them?
Yeah. I don't know.
That's certainly a discussion, definitely. You know, it's it almost makes it more like a additional dwelling unit type thing in in the various zones and and um, but uh, I'll be happy to provide that data for you, what some of these counties do in some of the other zones. We certainly can get that right out to you.
And I think you're right with so uh, like zero zero dwelling units were a big deal in Cody, Wyoming, where I moved from, because it's a tourist place, right? It's a big deal. Um, in fact, what I sold, my house I sold out there, they turned the back garage into a whatever ADU or whatever they call it, right?
Yeah.
Um, and I'm just thinking it, what? An ADU.
Additional dwelling.
Additional dwelling auxiliary, but.
Yeah, that's.
It's on VRVO right now, in fact, so I can go sleep in my garage for three hundred and twenty dollars a night or whatever it is. I don't think I'm going back to do that, but anyhow. I think about that with the R one, you know, I have a little more land, I want to have a VRVO separate driveway or an ADU, whatever, that gives me enough land that hopefully my neighbors are protected from any, you know, noise or issues. But I think that's what we need to look at is, I think R one has a place if we are gonna say that that's where we're gonna put the threshold for these hobby farms and some of these other uses, right? Um, we just need to figure out, is the place at what is it, eighty seven thousand hundred and twenty square feet, or is it at five acres, or is it somewhere in between? Um, but like I said, I really worry if we keep pushing the rezones, then this whole urban sprawl and urban farmers is there just maybe not be the availability, because lending right now is real high and you know, maybe I did get my five acres when things were low, and now all of a sudden I can sell off two and a half rezoned to R two. And I can pay off, you know, fifty thousand dollars on my loan or sixty thousand dollar on my loan, like that's a huge deal for a a working class person. Um, so I just.
Could you put up the, could you put up the beacon map that shows like the zoning districts? Like where is all the R one and R two?
Ninety nine percent of it is west of the city, south of fifty.
Yeah, yeah, it's all in that slice of pie.
There's.
Map, right?
Southwest of the county.
Yeah, so zoom in just on the those southwest. So essentially, it's all south of fifty.
So you're looking at the.
Is R two, yellow is R one.
Okay, the blue is.
R two.
R two.
Yep.
Then red and pink, red and uh, red's the commercial. No, purple's like.
What's that, certain brown like over on the left?
PUDs.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you were in the middle of one of those blocks, like say you're in the middle of like that yellow block, that's a big hole it up up there, a little bit. That one, but drag it down.
How do you drag it down?
Like just grab a hold of it.
Just quick and pull down.
There you go, okay. So, yeah, if you were like in the middle of, say, like that yellow area, anywhere there, which, I mean, that's a lot of acres, if you pull it to the right, so you can see more. Right or left?
Oh, there it is.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we have like over four thousand acres of R one just off the top.
So just click, click and drag.
Just move the whole thing to the right.
Just uh, click on.
Sometimes I click on another feature and then.
Does the mouse now work?
Oh, there we go.
There you go. Okay, so.
I'm not used to this.
So like, say like section twelve there.
You're right.
It's all R one. Say that you've got ten fifteen acres in the middle of it somewhere. You're not going to be able to rezone it realistically. Not to like R two or something, probably. Maybe if you had a large enough chunk, but not for ten, twenty acres, probably not.
And that area is already rough terrain.
Yeah.
That's where machine development started. So dividing it up into small lots is it's just our.
Right, I guess I'm just, I'm just using it as an example, like, I'm not saying like geographically whether that would work or not, but like from our zoning ordinance standpoint, we're not really supposed to be doing spot.
Right.
Right, so
Yep.
unless you're right around the edges of where you meet up to pink area there somewhere, then you could probably rezone a small acreage, but if you're out in the middle somewhere, rezoning is probably not very realistic.
And that's that, that's why this discussion is going on about making smaller acreages. And, you know, and the other thing that came into play was we're at a time now where um, a lot of us were are are uh, wanting our parents nearby and things, and so that was another thought process that maybe this would help in that that type of situation a little bit too, but but um, we certainly all understand the arguments, so.
You know, but within our ordinance, on a five acre lot, you can put a second home. It's in our ordinance, and that's why I said read those clauses. Uh, it's fifteen oh three, you can add a second home if you made the yard and the setbacks.
But my, the whole concern, I think, is if they have to lend or borrow
Yeah.
on that second home, home, they don't own that piece of property, because it's still it's still deeded to the person who they're pulling it off of, and I s- I think that's still the fear for Chris is my dad, and hey, Sam, come move, you know, move back on the farm. In nineteen eighties, I just went and bought a three thousand dollar trailer house, drug it back on the farm. Life was good, didn't have to really borrow any money. Now, it's like if I have to build that house, I don't own that piece of land, it's not needed to me, and I think that borrowing piece becomes really iffy, and so that's why I think we have in the ordinance, I think that's cool. I think it's a really good opportunity. But unfortunately, my mommy and daddy aren't borrowing me any money, I don't think, and so because of that, it I do struggle to say that that is a viable solution.
Yeah.
That one. So, but I mean, there's there's pink swaths up there, which are R two, correct?
Yeah.
One acres, and there's nothing built there right now.
Yeah.
And.
Two is the blue.
I guess I don't understand, also, I mean, we did two developments just north where Don lives. How many homes are gonna go in there? Twenty, forty homes, and they came in, they owned the land, they rezoned each of those. It's it's less than a mile. And they're gonna put homes there.
Yeah.
I mean, so I I guess I'm I'm struggling with why we need to change the conditions of the current zones we have, when you have the ability to come in and say, okay, I am the landowner, and I am going to develop this tract. Carl Shanks done it, they've done PUDs, you can do PUDs anywhere, as long as you have five acres. And you develop it. So, and we we talk about hobby farms, there's a lot of differences, there's more differences than just hobby farms between these two.
Yeah, accessory structures.
You've got golf courses, you've got greenhouses, you have panels, you have all of those things. Now, bumping it down from five to three, do I think that's gonna make any big difference, any impact in the goal that's being stated for why we're doing it? No. I don't. I don't think moving it from five to three is going to solve any problems. Not one.
I would basically support that.
I agree.
Not one, not when you have the tools, because.
Everybody doesn't have forty thousand extra dollars to build.
But that's why you rezonate, so you have one acre. And if you're gonna, i- if I'm a person and I want to build a home in the middle of section twelve, um, one, there's probably no roads there, so I'm not gonna buy one acres. If you rezone all that, I can't build in the section in the middle of section twelve. If I'm gonna build on the edge of section twelve, it abuts to the pink.
That's why.
Then rezone, start rezoning those areas to get people to.
Lots are next to me, sell for eighty seven thousand dollars a lot.
I guarantee you, if you rezone it and they're one acre, they're gonna be eighty thousand anyway. That is just how it goes. The smaller, and you know land sales. Iowa, when they have a big, big chunk of farmland for sale, if it's a, if it's five hundred acres, they'll say, okay, we're gonna sell it all as five hundred, or we're gonna sell it in three tracts of one hundred, one hundred, two hundred, whatever brings more. How does it end up going? It goes one hundred, one hundred, two hundred, because they can they can spend fifty percent more on a smaller area, because they have money to do it. They can't do the the greater, and so the smaller the area, the more per acre you're paying.
Actually, uh, I have no proof backed itself today, but when I was in in the business, actually, the the big boys come in and buy all they want.
But if, well, but if if they sell them all, if they auction it off, so the little guy can try and buy this, he drives the price up. The big guy might end up getting it, but he's paying more.
Yep, and they do.
And that's that's just how it goes.
Yep. Exactly right.
So, I mean, you can make all those half acre lots, and I guarantee you they're gonna pay twice as much per acre for a half acre lot as they do for.
And we have, and we have to keep in mind, you know, septic tank, and we have to keep in mind some of that, so if we if we undercut the lot size too much, right, like not only did we sweep the rug out from them being able to do some sort of hobby farming with our existing ordinance, of course, that can be changed, but we also potentially, especially in that terrain, change that for them for septic, so.
Okay, so what what I would suggest to cut to the quick is you give Gary a list of the things, why you don't want, why that planning zoning thinks it's a bad idea to support going to a smaller acreage. And we'll send that back in next week when we meet the County Commission, that'll be our report, this group. Does that sound all right?
And al- ultimately, right, the County Commissioners can just change this without our without our approval.
Well, that's that's the thing. I mean, next month, we'll have the hearing. You can make direct, whatever recommendation you want at that time, we pass it on, and then they're gonna have to.
We pass it on and then they're gonna have to decide what they want to do with it. So that's the bottom line, so if you feel, yeah, that none of this is worth pursuing, that's the recommendation you make. And then county commission has to decide how they want to deal with it.
Think we should separate.
Each section.
Each section.
Yeah, and that certainly can, you're, you can do a recommendation on each.
I think there's a lot more interest in doing section uh five egg. Going from twenty to five acres than there is in. Making of. Going from five acres to three or two, or two.
Yeah.
Those, those, to be honest with you. Sherry's right. The smaller you make. The lots, that kind of thing, when Jim Tramp did quarry pines, those lots are half acre lots and they go for sixty grand. And. Now granted, there's some infrastructure that goes in. But not much, there's a road and. Some water lines and he didn't even pay for that, paid for the road, so um. I don't see a, a great advantage in the R one and R two. Uh, changes in acreage.
Well, this, this. Well, R two we already have.
I don't see a lot of advantage in our, our one, I just don't.
You see, you see any advantage in going from a, a true acre to forty thousand square feet in R two?
Why are we doing that?
Yes.
Because it's inconsistent.
It's an inconsistent.
It's an inconsistency and the, it was changed, the forty thousand was added because when we were making plats, you had to allow for roads. And things, so you couldn't have a full acre because you had to cut off. How many feet for the road right away?
Sure, those are technical.
So that's.
I don't have any problem with.
So I guess I would ask, does anyone have an issue with?
Seven thirteen, I think is.
Yeah, seven thirteen, eight oh one, eight, eight thirteen and ten thirteen.
So on eight oh one, basically. Is the way that our ordinance reads now is that we can't.
Yeah, it doesn't give.
Three.
Doesn't really give the ability to add more R three zones.
So like if you're looking at like the map here, if you're saying like, wow, there's a lot of area that's down like the lake area or a lot of that blue area that's RT that. Maybe could be. Higher density residential, we can't do that right now.
Not, not. The way this reads.
Okay, so this is just basically cleaning up saying we can if we want.
Yeah.
I think it is wise for us to discuss why the original writers of the ordinance had it in there. Why would they put that in there? Because if we're gonna take it out, I mean, we're really changing the intent of R three. The only, the thing I, I can think and I, I should have asked a couple people who I know helped write these. Um. Is that they didn't want that dens- densification outside the city. They're half acre lots, they're barely big enough for a septic. They intensify um the use of the county roads going to those areas and all those county roads for the most part are gravel. And so that's the only thing I can think is out there, they didn't want the extension of that high intensity use. Just because of the services, the electricity, the water requirements, sewer especially. So is that worth discussing or are we just going to, if we take it out, then obviously. When you go through the rezoning process, you're still having a public hearing on expanding the area.
Well, there too, though, again, I think the thought process might have been that. It does, would the county commission be considering areas by the ETJ? Basically, because, or you know, there was some discussion when they did their last, when they're having, when they're having their comprehensive plan discussion. Would, if any of the ETJ would ever go back to the county. This would give them the ability to at least consider that, I think that's probably the two things that might come into play there.
What's the possibility that we ever get? Control over the ETJ again?
I don't think it's gonna happen this go around from what I've been hearing, but it was brought up, it has been brought up in the past.
Is my guess, but. Don't know this for sure, but as long as I've been around, there's been some very powerful people in Yankton. That own land in Yankton that they want sold first.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Of course.
Yep.
Hey.
So I just think it's worth going through the exercise to surmise, if we take it out, are we, are we missing something?
What, what I've always heard is the school of thought of, we don't want to be like Lake Okoboshi.
Right.
I mean. Yankton is kind of always poised ourselves as having a little bit more space, a little bit more. Property, right, or whatever it is, you know, again, we don't have homes that have direct beach access and things like that, we don't have that. And I think, but people are willing to forego that because of some of our zoning practices. And those people have, let's say, too, whether they're here three hundred and sixty five days of the year or ten um. So not saying. R three's bad and it's the worst thing in the world, but I think there needs to be, like we said, some control or some mindfulness with. What is the intent and how would a commission not made of, of us interpret it moving forward and what does that look like?
So right now, though, on say like our zoning map, where is the R three?
For Posey.
Is that basically it?
White Crane Estates.
So if.
Well, a lot of those behind, those newer ones are all one acre.
Oh, yes, I guess. So if anybody wanted to actually rezone and. Make an R three district somewhere, it's pretty much going to have to be right in that same area or.
Bordering.
Or bordering it or. Possibly be up there basically closer to Yankton and probably like the blue areas.
Mm hmm.
And.
So right, right down in section twenty two here.
The purple.
This is, this is all R.
So how they've gotten around it since then is a planned unit development.
Right.
Where they take ten acres or twenty acres and they design it all and. Homeowners Association, if they want it, things like that, that's how they've gotten around it to date, and land unit development, are they brown?
In the, in the Heine zone, twenty two and twenty three.
Well, I.
Then they don't have to sell it.
Well, you know, and I almost feel like. The way that's wrote with the issues that we'd have, mostly like the septic, I guess um. With R three not being able to basically be expanded as R three, but the way around that, like Sherry says, planned unit development basically forces you to come up with a. Good plan instead of just, well, now it's R three, you know, free for all, do whatever, but.
Right. Yeah, because you have to come in and have your plan for.
Have campers.
Yeah.
Roads and things, so, I mean, so that's the.
Your backyard, I.
Oh, yeah, that'd be. Yeah, well, that. Don't get me started on Deer Boulevard. That is a. The situation in. Maui, Hawaii. I mean, if we have a tornado down there and some fires start, there's one way in and one way out. And I don't know how you. Manage that. I wouldn't want to see any more rooftops in that area unless we have at least another road way to get in and get out.
So that's why we say the planned unit development makes it go through more checks and balances and.
Right.
A, a bigger, a larger plan and. They don't want to set up a sanitary district down there.
Well, the other thing too, it happened.
I know it's not gonna happen, I'm just saying.
Federal government says it has to happen.
I know, I'm just saying that, though, those are some things that if we allow R three to grow, to grow. They'll be foregone and might not be good for the expenses down the road, whether it's public safety, whether it's.
You, you go into that R three area right there and I didn't, I can't back this up, but I can surmise it, and I think I'm pretty accurate, to go down and say. You want to dump your sewage uh in the ground like you've been doing, or do you want to pay four hundred and fifty bucks a month? And your sewage pumped up the hill and processed in Yankton, those folks don't have that four hundred and fifty bucks a month, so.
You said that, that, that's not what they want to spend it on.
No, and.
I agree.
Next time we have a really, really wet year. And some kid gets sick down there. And they find out that it's sewage bubbling up above the ground, who was it? Bill said. When we had the rains, he has land. That has a swale in it. And their water did not come in from outside, it bubbled up from under the ground, that's how water works. And if you have a really wet year down there. With all those septic systems, and I guarantee you. There's a. Forty seven Chevy buried down there someplace instead of a septic tank. Oh, yeah, that's what people used to do.
There's all kinds of them along the riverbank.
Yeah. I kayak for you often.
Yeah.
Oh. I would, I don't, I wouldn't be in, I, I agree with Sam, we need some. Some control on that, I don't think I'd change that. Section eight oh one.
And now we, are we in consensus on that? I mean. I mean, we all, we all know there's an issue down there, so adding R three.
It's just gonna make it worse.
Fuel to the fire, so I mean.
Well, and it's not just that area that you're thinking about, I know, I mean, it's other areas that it could potentially go where you might not have those same like water issues, but.
But the plan you, but planned unit development is probably.
The best way to.
Our preferred method to getting something similar to a high density rural district, right? So I say no change.
Yeah, I agree.
When I, I got about ten, five more minutes before I have to leave for another meeting, so I'll work through the next portion, but.
As, as for eight thirteen, I think that's just a clerical correction too, because that was changed to a twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Versus the half acre again, it gets around that.
Yeah.
And I agree with that, and also adding the, the meeting day in our sewer requirements is a good addition.
Yep.
And then I, the ten thirteen was very similar.
Yeah.
That was commercial, it should have been.
Yeah.
The twenty thousand.
That one just stays.
Not the forty. So.
And as far as I'm concerned on the five thirteen, I don't have any problem with it the way it's written.
So as far as one dwelling unit per, per uh quarter section.
Right, you're saying current amended or?
The way it's, the way this.
With, with the proposed changes.
Right.
So the way that this reads is that you'd have one dwelling per quarter sections, that's four. For dwellings per section.
Per section, potentially. Not that you would do it, but that you could.
So when you, when you looked at Mini Haha Counties. They do it on a quarter quarter section, which is forty acres, so there allows in one eligibility per forty acres.
Right.
Okay.
This says one eligibility per.
A hundred sixty acres and it's requiring you to build them at the corners.
Right, and then also in this, it says all existing dwellings, including those on parcels of record are counted towards calculation of all overall base density, so.
Right.
So the housing that is already out in the county counts towards those.
Right.
So then how do you say, well. This section's already basically too dense. This section's not. Now the overall base county density. How do you determine which one, can you, do you have an eligibility then on the less dense piece because the one next to you is too dense?
You, I, I believe how that is stated is it, would all existing dwellings, including those on parcels of record are counted. Um, so that would be on your one sixty, the challenge. It gets into a, a lot of challenges, so um. My family owns land, I have two sons. I would really love them both to come home, build a home on the land we have. And I would like them to build it close enough so they can walk to grandma's house. So can I, can I achieve that with these and with this negate?
They want you to gather close enough so you walk to their house babysitting.
Oh, gosh, no, those little boogers are walking to grandma, no, grandma's not walking to them, but.
Horse.
You know, so we have some, some ways to work around that in our ordinance. Um, so you can, so does that, does this negate me being able to build a second home by my current home because that is in direct conflict with this? So if my mom and dad need a place to come. Can I build a second home beside my current home? This says no.
You, the landowner, already have that ability.
Well, but this is I can't do it because I've used up my one eligibility in my quarter section.
Um, wouldn't you, I don't know.
Well, I'm not grandfathered in, this says if I've already, if I already have a home here, that counts and I've used up.
On the other option is if you could strike that whole portion of the paragraph if you choose.
Yeah, I absolutely. The way you put it. You, you, you need to be able to build a, a house for your family.
You know, it's so, so we had to be careful and so if, if there's a quarter section and there's two eighties. And Bob has a house on his eighty and Stan doesn't. And Stan had every intention to move back and retire on the place, the farmland he farmed when he was a kid, Stan can't. Because that one sixty is used up. So we have to think about that and that's, you know, Mini Haha and um. Clay is on forty acres, Turner's on forty acres, um, there was. Unions on eighty acres and then Hutch has the twenty acres, but they said a boredom adjustment may reduce the required area following procedures, the conditional use. You know, so it's, you always have to think of, try to, when you have something, try to poke holes into it.
Right.
And.
So you suggest that they should be able to have sixteen homes on a section.
That's what Mini Haha County says, you can have sixteen homes.
You're gonna let them either all on a mile line, which is fine, but.
Well, and they don't require that.
But they're also not required to be out in the middle of like sporting law lots.
Well, they're not requiring them too, but they're not saying that they can't.
So would it satisfy your objection if it, if the eliminated? To be placed where two section lines intersect? So in other words, you still have the base, same base density on a section where you could have four dwelling units on a section.
I put the thing in there for the quarter, you know, it was for, for two reasons, one. For buses and, and roads.
Yeah.
And, and two for farmers, and that was not in that order, you know? If you let them build wherever they want in, in a section, it's gonna affect farming.
Yeah.
I, I did have Chris article, it's, it is written pretty much from the. Egg protection zoning mindset, and I know we're not huge on sliding scales and things like that because they get really hard. For the layperson to underze- understand, but about midway through the packet, it does talk about some successful implementation. Of the sliding scales in egg districts, and it talks a lot about the parent parcel of land. And kind of how that would work and for, you know, Sherry's perspective. That system would work for her particularly, it may actually look, work for me because based on what we do with the parent lot size. It may allow me to go by, so there's, so the example in there, I think is a hundred and twenty acres, I can probably find it real quickly before I gotta go to my, a team's call. But the example in there is a hundred and twenty acres and with their sliding scale, basically ten acres could be up to ten acres could be used for development or whatever it was. And so they showed the example, which here, here it is. So Chris can maybe kind of pre, pre-visit and maybe set it down, but that is one option. Again, it's harder for the laypeople, it's harder for our zoning team, um, but it does allow us to achieve. Something, do I think this is the common ground? No, this is definitely written by an organization who's meant to protect agriculture. They do talk about the pros and the cons, um. It was the best I could find, how about that, to kind of guide you in the different zoning practices, so it talks about. Washington and Colorado and Oregon and their needs, and it talks about Midwestern Iowa, South Dakota, Nebraska, and it talks about Indiana and Illinois, right? Um, but a sliding scale would potentially help Sherry achieve what she is looking for, it may even help. Chris achieve what he's looking for because that farmer could develop. A portion of the parent lot. And it, there's a, and you, that hundred and twenty can be broke up into three forty acre residences, or it can be broke up. And it there's a, and you that hundred and twenty can be broke up into three forty acre residences or it can be broke up into a hundred and ten acres staying into a continuous track and five residents or whatever the picture showed. Um yeah, it's an option. But again, I'm not saying that's the right option, but in my research, this is a problem around across the country. Because everyone's situation is so unique, everything is so different that, yeah, we we write something up like what Don has, which is a really good step. But then we have Sherry who says, well, I got a couple of boys coming and and maybe some parents at some point. What does that look like? And so that's where I think this conversation is really pivotal that we look at all sides of it and get the whole picture. But I gotta take a team's phone call, so I gotta go. All right, see you soon.
Um Gary. Uh. Don't wanna kick the can down the road, but I do think um. There's been enough discussion tonight and this is an important uh issue. That maybe we have to, as the commission have to say, we need another month.
And that's not, you know, that's certainly an option. That was kind of the thought process initially, but if we wanna have one more discussion next month and I get you the data from from for R one, R two for for the other counties and uh and talk about sliding scales or whatever you wanna talk about. I mean, or just take this paragraph and just end it at five acres. Might be a possibility too and forget about the uh existing dwellings and the calculation in that part of it. But but um but we can certainly do that and um and move forward in that regard.
Just one last thing, I doesn't uh, Sherry, doesn't five sixteen two solve your problem? Uh. It says an additional dwelling unit by definition is allowed within the farmstead upon approval of the building permit application. If it is to be occupied by other members of the family, provided the property is not transacted or prepared, planted or described for transaction. In other words, as long as you own the land, you could build another house right now.
Yep. Yep, the bank probably went loan my son.
No, the bank.
Money, but I could, and then also five thirteen four is where Gary would have the ability to flat it out. But you have to be careful with how you word this because then which one.
I don't think.
Constrite it those and and so I just think it's.
I really like the the corner idea.
I would, and I would be careful there.
That's a farmer's dream because you can make those corners triangular. And when you're pulling your twenty row um planter, it makes it easier to make that turn anyway when you're doing your headland. Uh so it really is an ideal uh situation, in my view.
But I also think you have to be careful. That might be your most productive piece of property.
Could be.
And you've got the wooded craggy hill that is at the quarter mile line that is here and you don't farm it. And you think, well, there's a good five acres. I could make a little money off and get rid of that.
What if we uh?
So you have to be careful with that.
What if we threw in an option that uh? Let's see, a section could have four homes on it. And that they would be at the corners, however, at the discretion of the zoning administrator. The owner of that quarter section could have put put the house in a different place.
You know, so if you have that. That um ability for Gary to do that, I mean, how many times is Gary gonna say no? Well, then it becomes, why do we have them go to him because he's just gonna say, okay?
But at least there's some control. They have to, they have to ask. You could simplify this a lot if you just do the like changes I had last time to five sixteen one. Where basically you can include so that anybody can start a new animal operation is included in that new residence requirement. And then just make it a flat five acres and don't worry about it.
And in the future, you know, if you have any of these ideas, if you wanted to see the R two, R one, certainly let me know ahead of time. So we're not going to another meeting just because you don't have all the data that you're looking for. If we would have did that a few weeks ago after the last meeting, we could have had that or already had that discussion.
You know, ultimately, like basically our zoning ordinances. Is affecting your property rights and telling you what you can and can't do.
Right.
And if we're moving into the direction of trying to think of every different scenario. Putting on restrictions for this and for that and you can do this and you can do this there and that there. I think it'd be a lot better if you basically make it more that you can do what you want on your own land and buyer beware when you're you're in an egg zone district, there's agriculture there. So you know that you can have five acres, but you know that something could be built next to you. That's fine. If that was the case, if everybody could do it, if me as a farmer, me as a new farmer coming in. I can do what I wanna do with my land and I'm not affected by everybody else. There's not an issue with having a small acreage size. We can have small acres and then if you across the road, you wanna plot off five acre lots and sell houses, so be it. But that's not the way we are. Right now it's very one sided. In an egg zone district, we have. How many pages of restrictions if I wanna do anything with animals and? What, a couple paragraphs if you wanna have a house? And they don't really amount to a whole lot, really. I mean, that's pretty one sided. Why don't we just make it so that you can do what you want on both sides of the equation and make this a lot simpler?
All right, well, we'll plan on uh, I'll look up some of that data. If somebody else thinks of anything else that they want want data on, just let me know and we'll just go with uh having another meeting of discussion next month, hopefully wrap it all. I'll and have some kind of recommendation in mind after that, so sounds good.
I'll do just a little bit of side talk. And and this is my opinion. But I I I do not think we can possibly imagine how difficult the next three or four years are gonna be if if President Trump gets all things done. But can you imagine how many people are gonna go unemployed? Can you imagine the demands and welfare that are gonna come up? Can you imagine how many people that have been living off the government, the government check for the last forty years are gonna have to adjust? And I I think it's gonna be tough. That's that's why we have to, as the county, that's why we have to sit down and take a deep look at. We spent that three or four million dollars we got from COVID and put it in the roads and stuff, but. Maybe we shouldn't have done that. We needed, we needed to take it back, but.
Yeah.
But uh, you know, now it's gonna be, it's it's, there's gonna be tough times.
Could be, yeah. Um. Anything else to add?
Are we still on? We're still being recorded.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we we have an adjourn.
We have it, so.
We have an adjourn. Yeah, unless there's anything else from the board real quick, anything? Any public comments? No public comments, so in a motion to adjourn.
Who will adjourn?
Second lost.
All in favor, say hi.
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 Gary, can you get this?
Can you? Come up with whatever it is and so that. Maybe we, the five of us can review and send or six of us, whatever there was, and send comments back. Uh before before the commission meeting. Yeah.
You mean before this mission meeting?
The next one.